Well, good morning, everybody. This is the Downtown Parking Committee for October 8th, 2020. Welcome all this morning as we're getting used to a darker sky in the morning. It's harder to get up this early, but that'll soon change in a few weeks. Can I have the roll call, please?
Committee member Ed France.
Good morning here.
Thank you. Matt Labrie.
Here.
Sean Pratt.
Here.
Andrew Newkirk.
Here.
And Chair Pinner.
And I am here. Thank you all for being here tonight, or tonight, this morning, and the staff who are with us this morning. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Excellent, thank you. At this time, we'll move to item four, which is public comment. This is for items that are within the jurisdiction within our committee, but not currently on today's agenda. If you and the public would like to speak on that type of item, you have two minutes to do so, and you can be recognized by way, raise your hand. Ms. Clark will explain that process.
Yes, Chair Pinner. So for any members of the public who are here and who wish to speak on an item, either right now for a public comment for items not on the agenda or later on for specific items, please use the Raise Lower Your Hand button, which is in the Go To Webinar app on the control panel. We'll see that, we'll call on you, we'll let you know to go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be able to do that at that time and make your comment.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I am not seeing anybody for public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will close general public comment and move on to item number five, which is the approval of the minutes from our September 10th, 2020 meeting. I will entertain a motion. I'll move approval. I have a first from Mr. Newkirk.
Again.
And I have a second from Mr. France. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, can I have the roll call, please?
Committee member France.
Hi.
Labrie.
Hi.
Newkirk.
Hi.
Pratt.
Hi.
And Chair Pinner.
Hi. Thank you all. Okay, we're going to move into our first item of this morning. And that is item number six, visioning of the future of downtown State Street.
Mr. Chair, we're really excited about this item. I want to welcome Jason Harris, who's the Economic Development Manager, who is with us today. He has been a strong partner in all things State Street that we have been doing and managing. And he's going to introduce to you this tour that we're doing with a lot of commissions. And so take it away, Mr. Harris.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Dayton and members of the committee. Again, Jason Harris, I'm the city's Economic Development Manager. And my position was newly created and I'm relatively a newer hire, six months into the position. I started on March 30th, just about a week and a half into the pandemic. And if we all reflect and call back to that period of time, both prior to the pandemic and then obviously the pandemic itself, downtown was, you know, was on a decline. And obviously, there was a lot of consternation and concern related to amount of retail vacancy and the general condition of the downtown overall. But with the pandemic, we saw a complete shutdown of business activity and really just an absence of just public visitation. And obviously, all the businesses were closed in downtown. That lasted for a two-month period of time. And if we all reflect through that period, the mayor convened the Business Advisory Task Force. Mr. Chair Pinner was one of those 20 members. And they had recommendations that were put forth. One of those was to allow business activity to occur outdoors. And that naturally coincided with just the strong cluster of food service operations that are on State Street. It was a natural inclination to close State Street to allow business activity to occur outdoors as well as just allow public visitation. Next slide, please. So what we have today is a presentation on State Street. Here are some old imagery Mr. Dayton is going to walk us through. But ultimately, the question before us today is the condition that we've established is temporary, is exciting and popular as it was, is for the city. There is a broad question out there of, you know, where do we go from here? And with that, Mr. Dayton made reference. We're visiting a number of commissions and committees and stakeholder organizations throughout the community over the next month and a half or so, yours being one of those. And so we're going to show you a series of visuals, both of downtown State Street, but of other communities to get a feel for pedestrian, public promenade streets in public areas to generate kind of the creativity of ideas. And then we'll go through a series of questions of kind of visioning. This is less of a design exercise and really more of kind of thematic perspectives of experience and feelings. And the objective from this is we're gathering all this feedback. We'll work with State Street Subcommittee of Council to develop a vision statement, as it were, a guiding principle for State Street that will then lead to answer all the multitude of policy questions. So with that, I'll transition it to Mr. Dayton to carry forward. And then we look forward to facilitate the discussion at the end of this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Harris and Mr. Chair, committee members. State Street has had a very long history and has transitioned along the way to many, many different things. We start the story kind of with the Victorian era. So this would be pre-1900s wooden sidewalk State Street. You could see the Victorian buildings, which were very common. The mule-driven trolley car was way ahead of its time. These were also being done in Los Angeles at this time. Ours happens to have the first bike rack on the back for the big wheels, which is always a hoot for me to think about. Next slide. Then we go to just before the earthquake. So this would be around 24, the Grotte building, newly constructed. You can see Victorian buildings at the corner of Annapamoo. That building was destroyed in the following year in the earthquake. You see the activity on the street, the streetcar. Next slide has moved to two tracks. And this would be also, so this is post-earthquake. This is probably 28. Streetcars have stopped by now. You can see the Santa Barbara Hotel. You could see some of the less Victorian-looking buildings that were constructed in the wake of the new vision, which was Bernie Hoffman's dream and Pearl Chase, you probably are more familiar with, who continued that dream of building a Spanish Revival architecture. Actually, what's really interesting about this story, just a little bit on the earthquake, is pre-earthquake Bernie Hoffman was busy telling the town that they are a Spanish Revival town, not a Victorian town. He actually paid for and built El Paso as a demonstration project to the community prior to the earthquake, saying that that's the way the city should go. The earthquake was just an accelerant of the dream, which was Spanish Revival architecture, which is now the iconic brand of Santa Barbara. Next slide. So we move into the 50s. And you can see that Spanish Revival architecture has come alive. This is Haley Street that you're looking at, State Street and Haley Street. So the building at the corner that you're looking at, at the corner of Haley and State Street is there to this day. Many of the buildings on the right side of the street are also there today. Indochina, in fact, I'm thinking all of them but one are still there today. Next slide, you can see, so you can see kind of how State Street is going to 1964. This is Christmas time. You can see we used to put the very large Christmas trees in the street. You can see the granada in the background. This would be the 1,000 or 1,100 block, 1,000 block, it's the 1,000 block. And bustling, everybody, you can see the sidewalk is pretty loaded with people. Of course, it is Christmas time. You can see how the parking configuration is. Next slide. And then the next earthquake, what I would propose to you to be the next earthquake, was Lacombra Plaza. So this is earthquake 2.0 Lacombra Plaza, constructed in 67, really put a fear into the downtown business mindset. The first year Lacombra Plaza grossed more sales than all of downtown and as a retail establishment, that was primarily because of parking. I think this is the only day in the history of Lacombra Plaza. That's a joke, that the parking lot is completely full. But that was it. And next slide, what Lacombra Plaza did was created one of the first outdoor mall experiences, where the retail was on the sides. And then you had a street kind of in the middle, but without vehicles and plantings. And so it was an outdoor experience. Next slide. So what happened was the downtown business owners decided that they needed to emulate that model in the downtown. It's no coincidence that Lacombra, the downtown plaza, which is what you're about to see constructed, is the downtown plaza, State Street Plaza is named after Lacombra Plaza. Next slide. So, but what they did was pretty amazing in that they disrupted the downtown by tearing up everything. Next slide. Even those rails in the middle of the street came up as they undid pretty much the entire street from Ortega to Victoria Street. Next slide. And created that outdoor mall on State Street, leaving the vehicles. Next slide. But making the sidewalks way more generous and making a shopping experience. And then, as this committee is very familiar with, also creating the parking system to go with it in the back so that it could keep the shoppers that Lacombra Plaza was stealing. And that was a very successful model for downtown and has been successful up until recent times. It's been redone in bricks. This was the old, if you can see the surface in the shadows, the original kind of Spanish printing, concrete, stamped concrete with color has now been done and bricked. And even some of the pieces that you see there in the foreground, the street furniture, has been transformed into different types of landscaping. Next slide. So this is the State Street that we have known pre-pandemic. But what's been happening pre-pandemic is we've all been talking about the economic change, transformation that's happening. We've been talking about this for a significant amount of time as the attractiveness of downtown has gone down, as the funk zone has accelerated, as retail climate has changed across America. We have been talking about, we've already been imagining what could happen. Next slide. So then what happens is we do have a pandemic. It's actually very similar to the story 100 years ago, where the city leaders were dreaming of a different day, and then the earthquake hit, which accelerated that day. The same is true for what happened. And who would have imagined this scene in February? Would you have imagined this scene if I had told you in February that the 500 block will be the most populated, the most popular place to eat in the city during a pandemic? You probably would have said, what is he smoking? And so we converted the street to come out and have the retail outside, which was required for the COVID situation. But what that did is it rejuvenated the street. And now this has become the magnet of, this street has, State Street has become the magnet for experience and what people want to see. Next slide. So this is, so looking kind of at the overall picture, what have we learned? We've come to, as the earthquake of 1925, we've come to an accelerant, an accelerant of the vision of transformation in the city and specifically for State Street. And so that is the purpose of this discussion. The Subcommittee has, the State Street Subcommittee of Council has been formed. There is a clear idea that there needs to be a different future for the street. And so they have sent us to the boards and commissions and stakeholders. In fact, Mr. Harris has another meeting right after our meeting to talk to people, to ask them questions. But before we get to those, what are the possibilities? Next slide. What could the possibilities be? So just, you know, looking at other places, this is Pearl Street. You can see what they've done, the kind of architecture, the kind of paving, the kind of art, if you will. You see bronze animal. Next slide is, they have several of these on Pearl Street, the rocks, the different types of fixtures and furniture, the vibe. Next slide, just kind of thinking about what other people have done and what the possibilities for experiencing on State Street could be. The kids, it's kind of kid-friendly playgrounds. Next slide. There's actually a lot of different types of playgrounds on Pearl Street. This is Boulder, Colorado. Next slide. Splash pad, same street. Next slide. Entertainment, this is, would be the spontaneous entertainment. Next slide. And then some more formal entertainment or passive entertainment set up by people on the street. And a lot of these, as Mr. Harris will attest, a lot of these streets actually have an operating budget to go with it, where they can actually, so the city can be responsible for a bid organization similar to the downtown, downtown Santa Barbara can be responsible for activating the street. You can see there's flowers. That does not take, that takes a little bit extra work to get that kind of flowers in there. Perennials, next slide. So just kind of going through these images. This is more of a convertible space, so where convertible tents have come on in the weekend. Next slide. This is Denver. And the interesting thing about this, this one, as you see on the left, you can kind of see the tire marks across the intersection. This actually has the transit, it is the transit mall, it's a one-way transit mall. You can see how the restaurant has taken over the other side and then green space that people are walking on in the middle. Next slide. This is Charleston. Next slide. See the textures, the color, this is at Christmas time. Next slide. This is down at Third Street Promenade. This particular width on Third Street is very similar, 80 feet, very similar to State Street. You can see they have art in the middle. And Third Street Promenade, which didn't have the road. You see the two roadbeds on the sides of the fountain, it didn't have it. They actually installed the roadway to bring back vehicles and bring back activation to the Third Street Promenade because it had died. This is three blocks in Santa Monica. And then it became so popular when they opened it, they had to close it, close the street again. Next slide. More on the Third Street Promenade toward the evening. You can see the different types of lighting that they have. The drainage is in the middle of the street versus on the sides of the curbs. Next slide. Different features for kids, different types of art. Next slide. This is La Rumba, La Rumbla in Barcelona. And you can, it's a very similar right-of-way State Street. You can see there's vehicles on the outside next to the stores and then a wide open space that is more of a convertible space, tree-lined. Next slide shows you the same space activated by businesses that came, come on in the weekend. And these can be various businesses. Next slide. And then this is Avignon, this is in France. This is their center of the street. This one has pedestrians next to the building, sidewalks next to the buildings, and then pedestrian way in the middle, and then the restaurants on either side. Very similar to the 500 block and the way that this functions. Next slide. And then Amsterdam, where there is a little bit more profound influence on bikes and bikes as transportation, mixing with pedestrians, but having their own path. A little bit of a curve there. Next slide. How the, then this is another street that has vehicles but less, and then bikes and pedestrians. This is a lot narrower than State Street. Next slide. And then streets that have a mix but have separate, so vehicles one way on the left, bicycles two ways on the right, bicycle and vehicle parking in the middle, sidewalks on both sides with the restaurants against the building. Landscape in the middle. Next slide. So that's just to stimulate your thinking. As Mr. Harris mentioned, we're really trying to get to the vision so not have you be designing the tactile aspects of this particular street. But the three questions we have for you to just get your mind thinking, and you already received these ahead of time in the staff report. But do you believe, what do you believe is the reason for redesigning State Street downtown at this time? Or do you believe it's the right time to redesign State Street? Not wanting to lead you, but have you guide us as leaders, city leaders. If State Street is redesigned downtown, describe what's going on when you visit. What are you experiencing? So we'd really like to get in your head, like, in one example of that is, with the first earthquake, Santa Barbara actually grew to be an iconic global brand because of the architecture, because of the vision of the architecture. So if I was to ask you, what is going to be the ecology or the social experience that becomes the global brand that Santa Barbara would be known for? What are the characteristics of how people experience downtown? Yes, great architecture, that will keep on and remain. But what is the experience that you think Santa Barbara is noted for? And then finally, what role does a redesigned State Street play in the vitality of downtown? That's one of the biggest questions we've been asking, is how do we make downtown more vital? How do we make it more active? How do we keep it to be an active street? What role does the State Street redesign play in that activity? And then what are your goals for State Street in general? So those are our questions. This is a free-flow conversation. So, Mr. Chair, I recommend that you go to each person and have them answer all three. And then Jason and I will be taking notes. And then I will keep my camera on if there's a question to help stimulate some answers, I'll jump in. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, Mr. Dayton and Mr. Harris. Thank you for that presentation. It is very helpful to see those other slides of what's going on because we've all experienced different places that we have had good experience with and bad experience. But so it's great to see those and get a sense of other, what opportunities we might have. Of course, I know, Mr. Dayton, you were cautioning us to not follow down, trying to decide what type of tree we're putting in there or give you those ideas. I understand that. So thank you for that. And it is obviously a little harder to do this in our format, you know, with this type of call, video. So I'm open to, if someone would like to start off, if they have thoughts on those questions that Mr. Dayton has, please go ahead and turn your camera on. I'm not going to pick the order. I'm going to let you guys decide who gets to go first. Hopefully. Pretty soon, the teacher's going to have to pick somebody. Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to go with who is on the top of my list. And on the top of my panelist's list is Mr. Newkirk. Unfortunately, Mr. Newkirk, you're first.
All right, I'll give this a go. So reason for redesigning, I mean, I think there's kind of two forces at play. One is you look at the vacancy rates. Clearly, something from a real estate perspective is not working. So there's reason to do something and perhaps more drastic than what's been discussed in terms of like streamlining sign permits and all that kind of stuff. Like, we probably need to do something a little more dramatic. And that in combination with the inefficiency of the right-of-way. State Street is a terrible street to drive down. I mean, it's from just an efficiency standpoint. Like, anyone who drives downtown knows you don't actually drive on State Street. Like, that's a foolish endeavor. That'll double your time to get wherever you're going. So I just think it's, those kind of two factors to me are grounds enough to do it. And then I guess the third thing is there's actually an appetite for it because there's been a bit of a proof of concept. I mean, this has kind of been a no-brainer for a long time. But, you know, things move glacially often, and in COVID, things haven't moved glacially. So there's, you know, there's signs that this can work and really improve things. So that seems to warrant moving it forward. State Street's redesign, what's going on? I mean, I just, I think a lot of stimuli on the, whatever we're going to call it, on the road, on the walkways. I think all, you know, having, there's several blocks in play here. I mean, you could have some that are kind of open and could be, you know, places for open forum, like Delegara Plaza sometimes serves as. You could have areas for, you know, play, kind of playgroundy stuff. I certainly think, you know, the outdoor seating for restaurants is great and is, maybe this is getting too detailed, but I like it hugged into the restaurants. I think that's a kind of nice way to do it. It's certainly a lot of activity and different types of activity. And, you know, maybe that's performance, you know, music stuff, although that can be pretty annoying. I think if you're working at a place and you hear the same three songs over and over again. But a lot of that and perhaps maybe figuring out ways to contrast the Spanish Revival style, where I don't, I think if we get just stuck on making everything fit with that, I guess I would use the bike share maybe as an example of that, is sometimes modern contrasting with a set style is actually kind of an interesting way to go. So I think not being so dogmatic about the look, especially for things that may be more temporary, structures that go through the building permit process and design process, you know, umbrellas can come and go, lighting, you know, string lighting can come and go, those kind of things. And role of a redesigned State Street? I mean, I guess one other thing is having more permanent residents downtown. Certainly, like, I, you know, I used to drive back from Galita and cross State Street on my commute home. And by the evening, things are pretty dead because you lose the people working downtown. Maybe you lose a bunch of the tourists. And so the evening kind of dies down. And I think what we want to see with this promenade or whatever it ends up with is vitality more than from like 10:30 to 4:30 or whatever, you know, especially those workdays, getting more people so those businesses have more clients throughout the day. And so the role of State Street redesign, I think if we can make it a more appealing place for residents, that'll bring more people, that'll support more businesses. And I think, yeah, it could be a branding opportunity for the city as well, when done right.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say I'm glad that Mr. Newkirk went first because well done. He stayed really, really high level, so good job.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk, appreciate it. So next on my list is, unless, I'll give an opportunity, someone wants to jump in first before I pick. Seeing none, next on my list is Mr. France.
All right. So the reason for the redesign, I'd say
So the reason for the redesign, I'd say. I think that State Street was sort of a victim of its own excessive control. I often joked about stale or stayed street. In other words, there wasn't anything new or exciting or innovative happening there almost by design. And so. Yeah, it I think. It is great that there is an accelerating opportunity for a change that we were all starting to embrace for State Street. Again, I think there's a just a logistical challenge with State Street being a long corridor. So we need to be really innovative. And I think the one sort of limitation. Well, I'll talk about the experience. You know, State Street is our main street. It's our like primary thoroughfare. It's kind of the the public square where you're more likely to see people than anywhere else. I think. That for all of us being somewhat socially isolated. Seeing people in the new normal on State Street in the outdoor dining has been such a positive. And I think that'd be one example of the experience that we'd like to keep. The other element, I'll say for a long corridor, is that it's got to be more than just a pedestrian. Plaza. I don't think you're likely to walk from Sola all the way down to the waterfront. All too often. In a casual way. And so I think that, you know, especially as we've substituted out the trolley. I think the bike connection, especially because the underpass is the one real safe route for bikes to the beach. And that's been the primary bike route forever. I think that bike share and some type of long term bike route is pretty essential, not just for that connectivity, but also for activity. On the street. It is I, Rob, I really appreciated your presentation with the various images from other places. But just kind of showing how whether it's vehicles or something, there needs to be some type of activity. It's almost like. It's just nice to see something going on. And for for people who aren't biking, bikes could be a part of that. I will say also in the images of different areas, part of that experience is not purely commercial. I think it makes sense for where we are right now, that so much of both the sidewalk and the main street is purely. For restaurants and dining, I think long term, that would be too much and disproportionate. And then the redesign's role in downtown's vitality. I think that a healthy State Street will allow more radiating out. So the ability to emphasize the side streets has been kind of. Less of a topic because of the need to focus on state. I think when state is really healthy, and again, there's activity and also, you know, movement through. I think that should really help feed into health for all of the different. Commercial zones off of State Street. Throughout that corridor. So I hope that, again, it's a it's a main street and it helps amplify the vitality of the whole area. And. Yeah, I'm looking forward to this whole process.
Thank you, Mr. France. All right, next on my list of. Members is Mr. LeBree.
Mr. Chair, Rob and Jason, I sent you guys some notes. You know, when I think about State Street and the reason to redesign it, the thing that comes to mind is. That the the last iteration of State Street really seemed to be designed for with tourists in mind. And and, you know, visitors broadly to downtown. But I think the reason to redesign State Street is that for years now, we've talked about winning back the hometown loyalty. And support of locals and to a downtown State Street corridor that appeals to locals. Will be, you know, economically, culturally, socially sustainable throughout the 12 months of the year. And and also this goes hand in glove with. A an infusion of residential units into the downtown core. So kind of similar to, you know, I think Andy made a comment. You know, we want the downtown State Street corridor to really appeal and function well. In conjunction with with residential. So the reason to do it now is I think there's a bunch of reasons. One being society's values have shifted. Consumerism, consumer goods. Are less important, experiences are more important. The. I won't go through all the reasons. I've got some reasons there in the notes, guys, but. I think it's important to note that the reason to do it now, it should include that all of the stakeholder groups are on. You know, enthusiastic about embracing some sort of change. So now is definitely the time of the accelerant, Rob, as you pointed out. Has brought all of us together kind of under that same. That same sense of urgency. And when I think about a redesigned State Street. I think it should be bustling with activity. Economic, cultural vibrancy, human flourishing. So when I think about human flourishing, I think of a a space that. Is conscious of a variety of age groups, kids, elderly, affluent, less affluent. That it it should be a place where the entire community can can meet. And I think the big, big changes will. Be that there will be a lot more people and less vehicles. And State Street plays a huge role in in the vitality of downtown. And. Again, I think that if we keep locals in mind. Tourists will will love what they experience. And I I think that's that's where. I think the values. Traveling tourists has changed too, and they they really want to go where the locals go and where the locals like to spend time and their money. And so I think that's just critical to keep locals really in mind. So I'll leave my comments there at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. LeBree. And a thumbs up for Mr. Dayton. Mr. Pratt, yes, you were turning on your camera.
I'll wait up too soon. Okay, I'll thank you, Mr. Dayton, for that presentation. I thought it was great. Seeing history and everything. So and I I'm gonna echo a lot of what. Everyone here has said. I mean, I agree with what Andy said is, you know, any any local knows you don't drive down State Street. So. You just don't do it. It's 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 a bad idea. So, I mean, it's been great that we have this trial run that we've had and we've all quickly learned that, you know, you don't really need access to go down State Street. So that makes you question like, okay, well, why, why is so much taken up with cars? So I think that goes into, you know, the reason. We go downtown is to go get food or to go shopping. And we know shopping is struggling due to the selection selection of shops that we have or lack of. In certain areas. So although something there has to be done, I think. Addressing the street is is the next best thing. We need something else to draw people there. Place to hang out, a public square, as Ed said. I grew up here in Santa Barbara. I remember as a teenager going to La Cumbra or Pasayu Nuevo to hang out. Like you would, all the friends would be like, hey, okay, we're gonna go La Cumbra and just hang out. And I don't know why, but. But that's what we did. And times have changed. I know that a lot of people. You know, I know a lot of people go downtown to eat, but it's it's not much of a place to go to hang out. I I don't know. Last time I've heard people say, oh, let's go hang out downtown. You know, there are so many other options now in our lives revolving around technology. So it's you've got to have more than just selection of shops to drive people downtown. You have to think about the environment, the experience, as Matt said. You know, and a big thing is going where locals go. Whenever I go on vacation, I want to find out where locals go. So restaurants, shopping, all of that. So I think that was a thing, a key thing that Matt also added there that I I strongly agree with is focusing on. You know, the local community, because if we get the local community, you'll get the tourists. So. Those are my thoughts, quick thoughts. I don't think I need to expand too much on them because everyone else has said things greatly, so.
Mr. Pratt, why do you think, why do you think now is the, why do you think that? What role do you think a redesigned State Street plays in vitality of downtown? And do you have any specific goals? I know you kind of. Got around that, but.
Yeah, um, I think the, you know, the vitality of downtown, the redesign. I mean, it's a it's a tough conversation because, you know, there's a lot of the conversation going on about, you know, rent and leases and. And building, you know, housing and so forth. Those are all very big topics and a lot of different POVs on those. If you if you do any, if you build housing, anything like that, the street is a component to all of those. So. Where if you're driving people to live downtown, they're they're gonna want places to hang out. Think of like parks and stuff like that. And State Street can serve as maybe not parks like we think of it. But, you know, plazas or, you know. You know. But even with more businesses, I think, look downtown where we go. It seems like there's more people than ever. And I know you can say it's seasonality that may change. There may be an ebb and flow. You know, after a couple of years, maybe it dies down. But I I I think that the first step. This is a good first step to the vitality of downtown because it's where everyone has access to. Everyone gets out of their car and walks on the sidewalk. So everyone, it's the Paseo is we're always talking about the Paseos connecting areas. So I, for me, the goal is to draw people downtown. And it we we can't rely on just the tenants of all the, you know, businesses. We have to think of something else, the environment, the experience. And what we have a lot of control over that is would would be State Street. So if we're having issues with renters or not enough businesses in certain areas or types of businesses, what can we control right now? And that would be State Street. So those are my thoughts on that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pratt. So the last panelist, I guess, is me. On the list here, so. And first of all. If anyone else on the committee still has a comment or question, just turn on your camera and we'll recognize you. You don't only get one bite at the apple here, I'm okay. With re jumping in here. And thank you all for your comments. What what's the reason for changing State Street right now? Well, I think. And I am gonna reiterate maybe a few things other people said. I think it's been well said. I think we we've recognized for a long time, Mr. Dayton, you commented that we've been talking about this for a while. This isn't, this did not just happen, you know, six months ago, like, ah, something is up with State Street. And what should we do? I mean, this has been going on, I would say. At least five years in in rumbling talks, maybe farther back. So, you know, obviously, I think the changing retail patterns is probably one of the biggest reasons before this happened. To talk about what to do to keep State Street successful. So I'd say that's one of the reasons it's a changing role of how retail is is being viewed. Obviously, in those great old pictures you showed, there were no other choices for shopping but to go shopping. You had no choice. Nowadays. Worked each downtown is competing with 500,000 other stores. That they can just go to without having to go downtown. So I think that is probably the biggest reason that we've been talking about why to change State Street. Before this happens in this instigation. I will agree with Andy with regards to cars of State Street. It's a poor street to drive on. I know for years, the retailers, many of the retailers have been fighting the idea of closing State Street. They felt it was important for people coming to town who are visiting for the first time to do that drive up to State Street just to see what was going on. But I'm feeling now that most retailers would would agree that having a more vital downtown. And it's fun to visit is probably more important than having that car drive up and see your store. So I think there's been a mind shift in that need. So I think fortunately, that's that's been good. I think. It with regards to describe what's going on. I think with all the pictures you see in in what I would call the successful sort of. Downtown like that is a gap is gathering. I think the key word is gathering. I think in many of the Italian areas or European areas, the piazza, the plazas, we're calling it a plaza. It's just an area that people all come to gather, whether it is to eat, socialize, drink, shop. It it just creates a gathering experience. I think to me, the overall archery thing is gathering experience. I know that's a very broad term. I do believe in some sort of design, there needs to be the ability for a significant gathering space. Not just lots of little gathering spaces, but where can a community gather in a pretty significant scale? You know, not too squished into, you know, being closed has some advantages. It creates sort of an excitement to it. But, you know, so something, really both small scale gathering and and larger scale gatherings. Would be a benefit. To the comment about locals, I agree. I'm gonna say if it appeals to locals, it's gonna appeal to tourists. So I would keep that sort of the forefront because I think, as it was mentioned, you know, if if there's an exciting area. And locals are hanging out there, tourists are gonna say, hey, this is cool. Let's check out what's happening here. So I think that's. Making sure it's accessible and something a local community wants to do. One of my big, and I don't know if I'm answering these in the order, I'm just throwing them out of my paper here. So you're gonna have to put them in the box you think they fit. I have in big bold letters on my. Paper here, safe space. You know, it says, describe what's going on in your visit. This is one of my middle item. What do you experience? I'm experiencing a safe space. If I'm a family with children and I'm coming down here. I want it to be a safe space. If I'm a tourist visiting, I want it to be a safe space. If I live down there, I want it to be a safe space. So I would put that near one of the top priorities of how do I feel when I'm down there? I feel relaxed. I feel safe. To me, that's critical. If if we don't have that feeling. It will be very difficult to be successful. I wrote I wrote this down, maybe this is a little bit my, I wrote down sessions. Sort of variations as you're moving through. We've we've talked about how long the street is. So sort of. Almost like little neighborhoods. You know, that can you see it as moving from. This genre to that genre to that genre. So it it I know that's a little bit of a design feature, Mr. Dayton, I'm sorry. But it does give me the feeling of not, it's not monolithic. And I agree completely with Mr. Newkirk's comment about not having the Spanish revival. Handcuffs completely all over the plaza. I think. Some ability to stretch out a little bit is important. I mean. Where Spanish revival, you look at. I mean, we're Spanish revival, you look at cities in Europe that have their old stuff and then they have a new modern thing right next to it. You go, wow, that's kind of cool. They were able to marry the two things together. So I'd love to see a little bit more on, on that. So what, what role does State Street play in the vitality of downtown? Well, economic vitality is critical. You know, it's a critical to the community that there's economic vitality not only for people that have jobs for working purposes. It's incredibly important for the city, right? We recognize that State Street is the engine from a sales tax standpoint. And obviously, we recognize in our reports that hotel stays is a huge part of our. So the economic vitality of our city, you know, significantly set around the success of a downtown. One thing I would add is to be mindful of from a real estate's perspective, that when certain areas get really great, certain areas become less great. The less great areas become more affordable from a rent standpoint. People in the gray area start going, hey, let's go to that area that's maybe a little less expensive. And then you, you have this constant yin and yang, moving back and forth between the expensive and the inexpensive. And then it shifts to another area. That becomes the expensive area, the older area can be inexpensive area, it shifts back. I really hope that we think about that ahead of time. So we, we, we try not to have that. I mean, you, you can't quite change that economic factor, that is going to happen, but be aware of that. That's a little bit why I think the funk song became so popular. You had these areas that were inexpensive, hey, let's go down there. I know it's way off the beaten path, but if we make it fun enough, people will come. And the next thing you know, it's the expensive area. So just be aware of that dynamic. And, and lastly, I'll say, we have all talked about State Street, but we really do have to sort of look at the bigger downtown sort of, you know, structure and, you know, make sure that we don't completely forget our side streets. I mean, we are so blessed to have a generally flow of circulation to be off State Street. Our parking structures are off, you know, access from the side streets and Chapala and Anacapa. It's just, I mean, we are really well set up to do what we're, I think what we're talking about doing is making, but I just want to make sure everyone recognizes, we need to, you know, talk about the Paseos, the connections in between. Maybe some of those gathering spots are in between, you know, the parking structures and, and State Street and, and stuff. And lastly, this is a, this is, if I could wave a magic wand, I would take the blocks between Chapala and State, and State and Anacapa and cut them in half and have an alley down the middle in between there. So our blocks weren't so deep.
Say that one more time, Mr. Chair.
If I could, going, you know, same direction to State Street, if I could have an alley parallel to State Street between Chapala and one between Anacapa. So our blocks weren't so deep between State and, you know, Chapala and Anacapa, right? So you have an area for, for deliveries and all the stuff that needs to flow to the businesses and to the rest, residents could happen in sort of those delivery passive travel.
Back of house?
Back of house. And I think that's one of the other difficulties we will be facing when it comes to residential development is you need path of travels, you need exit areas, you need ways to get out of buildings. And because our block is so big and our buildings are so long, it's hard. So if I could, like, talk about earthquake, boom, have a new path of travel paralleling State Street, that would be my biggest, most expensive design change. And lastly, obviously, we all probably recognize as much green as possible, trees, plants. You know, that's what makes us, I think, what we are so successful and just exciting to, to be around. And we, we've already got the great weather, so we've got that going for us, so. That's a lot of stuff, but there's, there's my thoughts. Does anyone else have anything they wanted to add in on that?
Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good thing. Because like a lot of people will now hearing, everybody may want to chime in again. And I'll just put, whatever you say next, I'll just go to your name and I will add those notes to that.
Mr. Bree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some comments you made jogged my thoughts as well. And the Paseos, I couldn't agree more. I think that is a great, one, area for our committee to be engaged with. But, but two, as we look at State Street, those Paseos could serve a lot of purposes. And the Paseo certainly needs a refresh, but you can look at the lot to Paseo, you know, behind Forever 21 and Tilly's. I mean, it's attractive and it also provides vehicle access. But, so Paseo's great comment, totally agree that we ought to keep that in the mix and side streets as well. And, and then I just wanted to say that to your comment, Mr. Chair, about gathering spaces, that I see a redesigned State Street as accommodating different sized events. And I was thinking about parades or marches or things like that. We have to, I, I think it'd be great to think about, you know, if, if we pack it full of amenities, do we displace or, or, or have to say no to those types of gatherings if, if there's too many obstacles? And, and I'd love to see a redesigned state be able to accommodate all of those, those uses. But then the, I wanted to add to the, the impact of a redesigned State Street. We, we've often talked in the past about how downtown and State Street is kind of the economic engine for Santa Barbara. And I think that will, you know, continue. However, a redesigned State Street also not just sales tax revenue, but it, it will impact kind of the, the pride and, and interest broadly. So I think, you know, for instance, Amazon, they, they love being, they, they came to Santa Barbara, they came to State Street. I think we would see more vitality and influx into the whole community with a really great asset like a redesigned State Street. So I just, you know, I think it's important for all of Santa Barbara to see its downtown core revitalized. And, and so, you know, we used to kind of think about this in terms of sales tax implications. But I think the cultural richness and kind of the excitement in the community to be part of this community would really be impacted by a redesigned State Street. So I think the impact is broader than just economics.
Thank you, Mr. Bree. I, I want to comment to Mr. Bree's mention about parades and, and gatherings and things like that. And I totally concur the need to maintain that. I want to throw out an additional idea to Mr. Bree's thoughts and, and some other places I've visited. We've always envisioned parades going up and down, straight up and down State Street because that's been the easiest path to travel. But we all have also said, one of the difficulties of State Street, it is so long and stretched out. And you might want to be throwing out the concept, could be parades be going up and down, are they serpenting around? So now the side streets are becoming, they're the places to hang out. You know, I know I've been in, I've actually participated in a parade in Bend, Oregon, which, you know, it doesn't go up and down one straight street. It goes there, turns here, and then goes down here and turns here. The police may not like the traffic issue, but I'm just suggesting, or the transportation manager might not like this idea. But, I mean, just picture letting the other streets get some of the fun, so. And keeping stuff that's happening on State Street happen, so. Is there anyone else of the committee would like to? Has something been jogged in this discussion that you want to add to? Mr. Harris, thank you.
Well, I just, I was joining on, looking like we're, we're coming to the conclusion of, of the commentary. And I would just add to, to Mr. Dayton's, this was extremely informative, very insightful. I, I believe you, you all as a committee and members of the community have an excellent perspective on downtown operation and the feel and context due to your oversight of, of, you know, downtown parking being one of those functions. And this has just been a treasure trove of really exciting information and perspective. So I just want to thank everyone for, for their contributions and, and Mr. Chairman for, for your facilitation and input. And, and congratulate you all for such a successful session.
None of us said to remove any parking lots.
Understood.
We, we found all the parking issues were just understood.
Well, and if anything, actually, it was, it was left unsaid that the vitality of State Street would actually help support the downtown parking structure, right? And, and I think it's, doesn't need to be said because I think it's, it's understood, right? That a, a successful downtown, a vibrant State Street in kind supports our downtown parking program. And, and I, I think they're, they're synonymous and, and synergistic in, in their operations. And I don't think State Street would have the potential or, and hasn't had the potential of, and of being as successful as it has been in the past and in its potential future without the availability of all of the adjacent public parking. And I think that is one hallmark of, of downtown that, you know, that I've seen similarities in, in other jurisdictions, downtown Santa Monica, for instance, having a similar program, adjacent public parking, supporting its downtown core retail. So, you know, just a really insightful group and, and of comments. And thank you all for contributions so early in the morning.
So, Mr. Chair, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be developing a conglomeration of all the commission and stakeholders' input with the same questions. We're going to be developing strong themes, notes, if you will, that are struck again and again and again, bringing back those, those themes to the subcommittee. And they're going to construct a vision statement from all those themes. So these, the, the ingredients of this conversation were rich, as Mr. Harris noted, and we're, we're excited to have been here and done this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Our pleasure and thank you for bringing, giving us the opportunity. And, and I'm sure as, as we've said before, hopefully opportunities to refine and, and continue to provide input. And as things do get obviously way down the path, when they start talking about function and form, there's a whole nother opportunity to input. Okay, I guess with that being said, we are, do we have Sarah public comment?
A public comment, let me see. I don't see any hands raised right now. If anybody who is in the webinar would like to speak on this item, go ahead and use that raise your hand button right now. We'll give it another few seconds. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment on this item. And we'll move to the next segment, please. Parking operations, revenue and expenditure update.
So, Mr. Chair, we're going to have Ms. Clark walk us through the, the budget. Again, this item, we have been doing every single, every single meeting. We, we think it's vital that the downtown parking committee understand, along with us, what is the status, the financial status of the parking operations so that we can actively provide leadership to any adjustments? And we have been doing some adjustments. So after Ms. Clark goes on, I would like to have Mr. Garza come on and, and describe to you some of the adjustments that we're doing as we move through the pandemic and its effects on parking, the parking system. So thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. So as he mentioned, this is an update similar to the ones that we've received each month so far this year, just where we're standing right now with our revenues and expenditures. So for September of this year, we brought in $378,000 approximately. Whereas in normal September, last year's September, it was $710,000. So revenues continue to be significantly below where we would normally see them. We had budgeted in, in our revised budget for fiscal year 21 to be bringing in about $586,000 this year. But, or, or for, for a month, for an average month. Again, we're coming in a bit below that at this point, but I think that things, there's, there's a little bit of light at the end of that tunnel and we'll talk about that in a minute. For on the expenditure side, fortunately, we are coming in a bit under our budgeted expenditures. So last month for September, we only spent $560,000, whereas we had budgeted to spend about $623,000. This represents a 25% cut over what we would be spending in a normal budget year. You know, so, so we are trying to keep our costs under control and we're working very hard to be sure that we're, we're keeping that as close as possible to that revenue line. So when we're talking about our, our operating costs versus our revenues, net, net for this month, we were $182,000 in the red. So in a typical month or September of last year, we only dipped about $35,000 into what, what amounts to our reserves. And we'd budgeted to dip a similar amount into reserves. But again, our, our revenues continue to be significantly lower than we would have hoped. So let's take a look at what that, oh, sorry, my slide isn't changing here. So let's take a look at those trends. And these are just the trends over this year or from this fiscal year, so starting in July. And so this is, this is just showing sort of the direction that we're heading generally. We've only got three months at this point, so we aren't, not a whole lot of data points to look at. But we are sort of seeing, if you look at that green line, you know, it started up a little bit higher and then it took a bit of a dip into August as we had more closures coming back online, you know, due to, to the virus case counts. And then we're starting to see that recover a bit. So that's, that's starting to tick upward, again, with expenditures, you know, fairly level, but it came down a bit this month. And if you look at that red line on the bottom, that is our operating net. So that is the amount that we are dipping into reserves. Again, this month was a bit less than we, than we, than we used in September. And we're going to hope to try to keep that trend going in that direction and try to get that red line pointing up towards, towards the zero. So here are some of the trends that sort of underline, underlie all of these numbers. In September, our occupancy, you know, it, it was fairly similar to what we have been seeing. So if you look at the orange lines on this chart, this is an average for all lots. We still remain fairly significantly below where we would have been in previous years. And hourly revenue, that is similar. So if you look at the revenue total for all lots from the gate, in September, we brought in $133,755. Whereas in a more typical year, we would have brought in around $380,000, $390,000. So one of the things that is, is, is putting that light at the end of the tunnel that I mentioned earlier is that we have begun, starting the week before last, to keep our lots open later at night on the weekends. So we've noticed that several of our lots were still very full when we were closing. Those include Lot 11, the Old Town Lot, Lot 12, and the Ortega Garage, also Lots 4 and 5. We have begun keeping those open on the weekends until about 11 o'clock PM. And that's been very successful so far. So if you look at the last weekend that we closed earlier, we brought in a total of $13,000 for that weekend. we brought in a total of $13,000 for that weekend. But then the following weekend, for whatever reason, this was, this was a bigger, a bigger weekend. So before 6:30, we actually brought in closer to $16,000. It was very busy downtown. And then after 6:30, we were able to bring in $6,229. And the staffing cost, the additional staffing cost to bring that revenue in was only $1,260 approximately. So we did end up netting an additional, almost $5,000 from keeping, for that weekend, from keeping the lots open later. And we saw a similar pattern last weekend. So during the daytime, it wasn't quite as busy. But after hours, it was almost just as busy. And so again, netting almost $5,000 additionally. So if this trend continues and if we were to keep, keep on going with the extended late night staffing through the rest of the fiscal year, that would result in approximately $188,000 additional dollars in revenue, again, assuming no other changes. So we are, and I'll let Victor talk a bit more about this, but we are keeping a close eye on this and looking for opportunities to generate more revenue where we have the business to support the staffing. So overall, I have a bit of a sunnier picture to bring you today for our reserves. We are closing in. We have just about nailed down what, where we finished FY '21. Unfortunately, it's a bit better than we thought. You know, last, last month, I think we were projecting it'd be about 18, 1.8 million that we would have used in reserves. We actually ended up only using about 1.5 million in reserves. So we started this fiscal year with about $5.9 million in reserves. And as of now, with our projections, which have improved a bit because of the, you know, because of that little uptick in revenue that we started to see this month and, and the, the decrease in, in, in our, in our operating deficit. At this point, we are projecting to use about $2.7, $2.8 million in reserves for this year, which would leave us with about 3.1 million to finish the fiscal year. So it's a much better projection than we had for you last month. Again, these numbers are all very preliminary. They're continuing to bounce around a lot depending on what happens month to month. So this may change going forward, you know, but as of right now, it's a little bit of a better projection than we had last month. So I will turn this over to Victor right now to, to talk a little bit more about the different changes that we're making.
Morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. Thank you, Sarah, for that great report and also the not as bad a projection as we were anticipating. As she said, we've been keeping a close eye on the lots and were able to deploy a second shift. And that has turned out to bring in almost as much revenue in that, in those few extra hours on Thursday, Friday and Saturday as the entire day shift. So we're excited about continuing that. And we're also looking at the possibility of adding a second shift on Sundays. So hopefully that'll yield even better results. Soon we're going to be implementing the software and hardware upgrades that we appropriated the funds for a couple of months ago. And with, with that implementation, we're hoping that we can maybe experiment with a little bit more of an extended operating time and in the hope of netting some more revenue with that. On the downside, though, a couple of months ago, we also discovered that one of our elevators just completely failed. We had our maintenance contractor come and take a look at it. And the estimate for the repair is about $150,000. So that's going to take a bite out of our reserves. We're going to have to go to council again to appropriate those funds. But it's a public safety and accessibility issue. So we've got, we have to repair the elevator. So more to come on that as we, as we go out to bid. Hopefully we'll get a better price than the original estimate. So bottom line is, Sarah was pointing out, we're tightening our belt about as much as we can and also looking for opportunities to, to collect some more revenue. So that about, I think, covers it for operations, revenue and expenditure updates. We're open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garza, Ms. Clark. Just my one question is, I'm assuming this means that when we say we're keeping the lots controlled longer, we're doing this to all lots? Or are we selectively doing lots?
Great question. So what staff has noticed was that there was additional late night activity at Lots 4 and 5, also at the Ortega Garage, Old Town Lot, Lot 11 and Lot 12, mainly due to the activity on the 500 block. We were especially pleased with the activity at the Ortega Garage because, as you know, in, because of blush and those other businesses being closed and now with the opening of the, what's that thing called, an M special? I think it is. That, that, that lots occupants numbers have jumped. So we're, we're really, we're really happy to see that.
Right, thanks. Thank you. Any questions from any of the committee? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Clark, do we have any public speakers regarding this item?
I am not seeing any hands raised right now. If there's anybody who is on the webinar who'd like to speak again, please use that raise your hand button. Okay, I don't see any public comment right now.
All right, seeing none, closed public comment. I guess the only other, first of all, I want to thank staff for doing everything they're doing for looking for, for ways to, you know, help alleviate the negative impact on the reserves. We really appreciate that. It kind of enlightens for me on the, when we're looking at the numbers for occupancy and our revenues. It, it still tells me that as, as excited as we are with everything that's going on in downtown, things still aren't normal for a lot of businesses. We have to recognize and respect that, obviously, because our, our occupancy is down still quite a bit. So hopefully things can, can get better for them and as hopefully as our county hopefully moves into a different level, hopefully sooner than later, because as we get, you know, different, different weather, the need for, for being able to be indoors will be helpful. Hopefully continue the trend of more activity downtown. Any other comments from staff on this item?
No, not at this time.
Thank you, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, committee members. Okay, unless you wanted to kick it off with something, Rob?
Well, the only thing I would say is that as Mr. Garza moves forward and tells you kind of what we're, we're doing in the, what we would call as the next phase of Parklets and State Street is that the council extended the ordinance. And so the ordinance that was the emergency ordinance was only supposed to go till the end of the summer. It's been extended till December and then Mr. Casey has the option of going till March. We took the opportunity to notice the businesses and Mr. Garz is going to tell you about that process and how we've, we're evolving the process of review, the process of enforcement and, and really moving into what we are now calling the interim State Street. We, we've been talking about this temporary State Street and now we're starting to move into more of an interim State Street. So take it away, Mr. Garza.
All right. Were you reading off my crib notes? Okay, anyway. As Mr. Dayton said, the ordinance that, that was governing the, the expansion of the businesses on the State Street was, was extended through the end of the year and then also with the option of going to March. That extension then takes us into the winter where we have rainfall, where we have cold weather. And, and it also gave us an opportunity to update the guidelines that govern accessibility issues and cleanliness and now storm flows and winterizing. So we, we assembled a group, including folks from the engineering section of Public Works, the fire department, some consultation with some of the building folks to make sure that the businesses that have expanded onto the public right of way with either Parklets or tables and chairs or platforms are aware that there are rules and regulations that they need to comply. And one of the most important ones has, has to do with maintaining the, the flow of storm water down the gutter lines in the streets, especially on State Street, also on Anacapa, Santa Barbara, Chapala. We put together a business notification cover letter along with updated guidelines that have been distributed in person to all the businesses that have expanded out into the road right of way. We also will be following up with an email message and then another follow-up with in-person visits to make sure that the businesses understand what their obligations are. And if they have any questions, we're standing ready to assist them to make sure that they're in compliance with the requirement to maintain the storm flow, make sure that when they're winterizing their, their, their areas that they are going to be in compliance with fire department codes. Many of them have erected covers, some maybe a sidewall. And in conjunction with heaters, we were, were, were concerned about making sure that they, that they don't create any fire hazards with accessibility. We want to make sure that, that our disabled community is able to access the, the expanded areas from either the street or the sidewalk with ease. So like I said, we're going to be following up with in-person visits and random inspections and also responding if there are any complaints. So with that, open to any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Do we have any questions from the committee for staff? Okay, seeing none. I'll ask Ms. Clark, my usual question, do we have any public comment regarding this item?
If anybody would like to make public comment, again, use that raise your hand button in the go-to webinar control panel. At this time, I'm not seeing any raised hands, no public comment.
Thank you. So a closed public comment. And I think, I don't think we have any questions. I think you've given us the updates on what's going on and fully informed us. And we'll, we'll see how things go as we, I think between now and our next meeting, we'll be into daylight savings time or out of daylight savings time, whichever way it goes. And so we'll start to see how the impact of that is having on our, our downtown and activity. I think we'll then move on to item nine, last item, which is program updates, perfectly on time.
All right, program updates. I want to start with an update on the access control system upgrades that we appropriated the funds for a couple of months ago. We've been working closely with Ski Data, who is the vendor that supplies all the equipment, including the software. This update is very complex. The, probably the most complex part, without going into a whole lot of detail, has to do with the server replacement. When the server is replaced, it also includes the connections that, that, for the credit card processing. So there's, there's a great deal of coordination and where the timing is very important. Where the hardware is installed, software is installed, credit card processors have to be hooked up in a timely way with the proper encryption codes and in coordination with our finance staff that manages the, the connections to our, our banks and our city's credit card processor. We've learned in the past that when, when those are not coordinated properly, now we have significant failure rates with, with credit card processing. So this time around, we're making sure that, that there won't be any glitches, that the transition will be smooth. We're anticipating that once the vendor has all the equipment and staff ready to go, the update work will probably take about two days. We usually pick the days with the least amount of activity and then we're off and running with all the new features, including a new intercom function that will allow a customer exiting the lot. If they have any issue, can push a button and talk directly to the main office. In the past, the intercom button only connected to you with, with the kiosk. That was important for the, for the remote entrances like the one at Lot 3. And, and so we're excited about that feature, feature coming onboard. Are there any questions about that part of the update? Hearing none, I'm going to roll into the lighting on State Street item. As you know, last year, we tried some string lighting along the 500 block estate. It was very well received by the businesses and so we have continued with that concept with a couple of string light installations on the intersection of Annapamoot and State with the decorative shades. We also did a crisscross demonstration at the intersection of De La Guerra and State. And I might say both, both those installations look really, really attractive and provide a little more light on a otherwise dim, dimly lit street. So we're, we're in the process of putting together a bid package to install more lighting crossings along State Street from the 600 block up to the 1200 block. We are also going to be picking up the, the light, the, the wrapping of the trees with the Christmas tree lighting that the D O crews used to do in the past. We're going to pick that, pick that up and hopefully have it all done in the first couple of days of November. So you'll, you'll see a significant enhancement of the lighting on State, which I, as I invite you to go out and take a look at the, at the lighting at those two locations and would appreciate some, some inputs and feedback on that. We think it looks really good. Any questions?
Does that cover it for you, Mr. Garza, all the updates?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, thank you. I don't see that we had any questions from the committee on program updates. Do we have any? I don't think we do public comment on updates. Am I wrong?
I'm not sure. Regardless, there are none, so.
Other comments, public comment is required on, on the, all the items.
Okay, so any public comment? Seeing, I think Ms. Clark said there are none, so we'll close public comment on item number nine. Thank you. Are there any announcements, special announcements, fun announcements? All right, conceal announcement I know is, I think we still have the opportunity, if you know someone interested in becoming a member of the downtown committee, I think the process is currently going on with city council. I may be wrong. There may have been a timeframe that you had to submit your application before now. So I apologize if I'm saying something that, is it true that there's still time or is it past, Mr. Dayton?
There's still time. Ms. Clark may have the, the deadline. I know it's coming up in October. There's still time. Ms. Clark may have the deadline. I know it's coming up in October.
There's a date that I know, yeah. So if you're, if you know somebody, please encourage them. It's very close, I think. I think the upcoming, you know, council interviews are coming up in the next meeting, Mrs. Clark.
Yeah, I, I don't have the date. Ms. Jackson might. If she does, I would encourage her to speak up.
Yes, it is actually Friday.
Tomorrow is the deadline for applications to submit. Knew it was close. So this is it, last, last chance until spring, summer recruitment. So we do have a couple openings. We'd love to fill those openings. Get more breadth and ideas and opinions is always a plus, I think, for our committee. So thank you. With that being said, right on time, nine o'clock here. Thank you, staff. I know Mr. Dayton has to jump to another meeting. So thank you for being with us and thank you all. And we'll look forward to, to seeing our next meeting here in November. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, committee members.
Thank you, everyone.